Call this meeting to order. The Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, July 19, 2017, at 6:00 PM. City Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manicklear.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Tonight are invocations by Councilman and also Pastor Sean Ferguson. And please stand for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Father Frank, we're reminded in Scripture in Psalm 127, verse 1, "Except the Lord build the house; they labor in vain that build it; except the Lord keep the city; the watchman waketh but in vain." And so, Father, we remind ourselves of this Scripture. And we say, "Have your way, even in this meeting today. We need you. We need your blessing. We need your hand upon us. Bless us indeed, oh God. We thank you for everything that will take place to honor you. So in your precious, holy name we pray." Everyone say amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. The council has for them the minutes of the regular meeting, June 7, 2017. What's the pleasure to council?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Forrester.
I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June 7.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations. Let me come down for presentations. All right, we're recognizing tonight, one of our city employees, for 30 years of service, Phil Finn, firefighter. You want to come on up? Phil, on behalf of myself and the city council, the citizens of Rockledge, and your fellow employees, I would like to congratulate you on the completion of 30 years of employment with the city, which occurred July, or which will occur July 11, or it did occur, July 11, 2017. You have proven yourself to be an outstanding firefighter and someone who can be counted on to get the job done, no matter what the circumstances are. During your tenure, you have won Employee of the Quarter, Quality Public Service Awards, which speak to the dedication you hold for your job. You have managed to save the taxpayers a considerable amount of money by utilizing your construction and mechanical skills to make improvements to the fire department buildings and other city facilities, on jobs that would otherwise have been contracted out. During your employment with the city, you have only taken a handful of sick days and have offered to donate hours to your fellow employees when they were in need. When you retire at the end of the calendar year, you will be missed and hard to replace. Thank you for all of your hard work. Please accept these gifts from the city and the Certificate of Commendation as a small token of our appreciation. Thank you very much, Phil. Ms. Kathy Shortridge here?
No.
Okay. We didn't think she would make it, but we also recognizing Kathy for her 30 years of service as well with the city. Our next recipient of being recognized tonight is our Deputy Mayor, Pat O'Neil. Pat O'Neil, come on down. Certificate of Commendation presented to Deputy Mayor, Pat O'Neil, for being recognized as the Home Rule Hero. Now, for those of you who don't understand what the Home Rule Hero Award is, the Florida League of Cities Home Rule Hero Award acknowledges the extraordinary effort and high level of participation of certain municipal officials on local adversary initiatives. Deputy Mayor O'Neil always goes above and beyond when it comes to participating in meetings and events of the Florida League of Cities, as well as the Space Coast League of Cities. Whether the gathering is in Bovard, in Tallahassee, or as far away as Washington, DC, Deputy O'Neil, Deputy Mayor O'Neil is always willing to give his time and effort to ensure that our city's position is well represented when it comes to significant policy issues. During challenging times of home rule at both the state and the national levels, Deputy Mayor O'Neil has remained an outspoken proponent of home rule and its importance to municipalities. His efforts are an internal component of the Florida League's grassroots advocacy campaign. Congratulations, Pat, on being a home rule hero. Frank, you want to come down here?
Oh, yeah.
He says, "Oh, no."
You need a stool?
Okay, Jerry, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I know you have a long agenda tonight, so I will keep it short, short as you let me, anyway. As always, it's a pleasure to live and to work for the city of Rockledge, and it's my privilege to represent you all before the Florida Legislature. As I know you all were following in this, most sessions are strange. This was stranger than normal. We had fights between the Governor and the Speaker of the House, and Speaker of the House and the President of the Senate, and then near the end, the President of the Senate, or the Speaker and the Governor got to be good buds, and it just ended up very, very strange with what we were doing. You know, the House wanted to do away with the economic development ability of the state and didn't want to promote Florida, felt there was enough sunshine here to bring all the folks down, and that was all we needed to do, wasn't going to put any money in that. So, all of that got resolved. And I won't say all of it, we're still in a position where the economic development, where we are, we're back where we were 20 years ago, and some of us have been around long enough, we've recognized those cycles. Now, we're back into promoting things that don't help a particular company. We're promoting general types of economic development, like industrial parks, roads, and things like that. But I can remember when we did that, and folks came back and says, "You know, we're not getting enough return on investment for these expenditures, and we'd like you to make them very specific, we'd like you to tie them to the number of jobs, and we'd like you to give out the incentives based on the performance." So, who knows? We'll have to see. Maybe we'll cycle back around. But with regard to the cities, as you know, the Speaker and the House wasn't terribly friendly to local governments this time. They have this strange idea that the state is the center of all true governance, and that cities are subdivisions of the state, and that the state government represents citizens better than anybody else, which not only many people share that, but they believe it very ardently. So, there was a number of bills that the House leadership was behind that, or moving that. There was an effort to do to significantly restrict and eventually eliminate CRAs. After a lot of hearings and a lot of alterations on the bill, it finally died a quiet death in the Senate before session was over. But I suspect it will be back. House Bill 17, the infamous local regulations bill that tended to say that the local cities could only regulate what you were specifically given authority to regulate, which was, you know, that's kind of 180 from the way you currently operate with home rule. And I do want to say, I appreciate Councilman O'Neil taking the time to come to Tallahassee a number of times to engage in some of these issues, and you guys sending him up to do it. He was a bit taller before he got up there and got in that grind, but he did an excellent job, and I want to thank him for coming. Also, House Bill 17, it had a pretty bright light and life in the House, but it was DOA in the Senate. It was kind of funny, at the League of Cities luncheon that we had down at the Doubletree, one of the first speakers that was there was Representative Fine, who was talking about this bill and how it was going to go and why it was necessary and all that, and the very next speaker was Senator Latvala from the Senate, said, "Oh, that thing you just heard about, it's dead," which was kind of an interesting lunch. And Representative Fine was out talking to the press about his bill and didn't even hear the senator say that his bill was dead, but, you know, it's an interesting process. Senate Bill 158, the firefighter's presumption bill, that's kind of a perennial bill, it gets, I think it gets narrower every year, a little less onerous, although it's still onerous, it died. It moved all right, mostly in the Senate, but didn't do anything in the House. Vacation rentals, another one of those key issues this year that had a lot of interest. Folks like Cape Canaveral, Sarasota, and a number of city beach communities were really involved in this, and, you know, you got areas where they're buying single-family homes and modifying the insides a little bit, making them a bunkhouse, and you got, you know, 10 to 15, 20 people spending the nights there, and if you don't have the fire in the roads and the waste pickup and everything else geared to that, as you know, as a city, it's tough to handle. So, they're still going to work on that, because that died in the Senate also. The Septic Tank Bill, started out with a big rush, Representative Fine had that, he was going to do it, but he also learned that sometimes you just can't carry the whole loaf of bread out of there. And so, as every committee went through, he had to slice it further and further down, and finally, it just died, because there wasn't nearly as much support for it in the Senate as folks had hoped, and he had actually whittled it down to a pretty good bill, but it did not make it. The local business taxes started out kind of serious, ended up being just a discount for veteran-owned businesses, but it didn't pass anyway. So, again, another one that was moving along to anything. The Wireless Utility Bill, the infrastructure, the hang-a-box on every pole, refrigerator size, it depends on who you talk to as to what size it was, that one got whittled down pretty good, but the bottom-line issue that the league simply couldn't get any traction on was that the city should be the one setting the rate, rather than the state. And it ended up, it passed, and it's set at a maximum $150, which is more than it started out, it started out at $15. But kind of the key of it was when Senator Latvala, I think it was Senator Latvala, asked in the committee, the league, "We pretty well agreed with you on all the other things, you got to have meetings, you got to get with you, you got to let beauty committees work on it. Other than us setting the rate and not letting you do it, this one arm-length transaction, would you agree with us?" And they just couldn't, you know, because that was the league's position, that the city's home rule, that the cities ought to be the ones to decide on the rate in a fair business transaction, and so, that didn't make it. It's $150 maximum, but I think most everything else got worked out in there, in the process. I know there was a lot of discussion on that bill. House Bill 7105, probably the one that's going to have the biggest impact on the city of Rockledge and the whole state, it's about $800 million, $700 million to $800 million, depending on how you work on it, impact on the state is the referendum for the expanded homestead exemption. It adds to the existing scenario or scheme of homestead exemption, an additional $25,000 in exempted valuation between $100 and $125,000. So, for properties that fall between $100 and $125,000, that amount will be added to the current homestead. If the property is evaluated at more than $125,000, then they get the full additional $25,000 in value for that. That will be on the next general election, and I can't imagine it not passing, frankly. But I would hope that all of the cities will go ahead and, before the ballot, do the exercise on where you're going to cut, because you know you're not going to have that money, and you might as well go ahead and do it and publicize exactly what you're going to cut when this passes, because when it passes, you're going to have to do that. So, you might as well do it upfront, let everybody know exactly what they're voting on, and then they make the choice. But, and I would hope that the statewide league would adopt that, so that you got a fighting chance, maybe, to avoid that passing. If people think that those things, because we all know, based on our sales tax here for the Lagoon and things before that, that just simply saying, "We're going to cut services," or "You're going to lose services," is not enough to deter the vote or get people to vote the way you want. You got to lay it out specifically. This is going to be gone. This is not going to be funded. This is not going to be done. You lay that out, you got a chance of maybe not passing. And if it still passes after having done that, then you shouldn't feel too bad about implementing what the people will then have voted to do. And, Mr. Mayor, that's it, unless you've got any questions. I hope I stay within my 10 minutes.
The only question I have is on the homestead exemption.
Yes, sir.
Is it only going to be prorated between $100 and $125, and anything over $125 gets to $25,000?
Yes.
So, how does that affect us? What was the amount that we set?
What was, about $1 million, Brenda?
It was $1 million and $6,000, based on current number of homes in the city at the current millage rate. So, it's over $1 million.
So, we get approximately $6 million a year now?
Um, yeah.
So, it'd be, we're going to have a million less, starting if this passes?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah. And, Mr. Mayor, that's why it seems to me, since you're going to have to do that, if it passes, you're going to have to go through the budget. It won't be an exercise at that point, to make it match. Why not do it far enough in advance to where you can lay it out in the newsletter? It's not lobbying when you're informing people as to what's going to happen, and you can lay out, this is where your vote is going to go. This is what you're doing.
Okay.
Jerry, what's, there's also a caveat about millage rates in there, too, isn't there? As to you can't raise them, you can't, something.
Well, no. As a matter of fact, when asked on the floor of the Senate, Senator Lee, who was moving the issue, when asked by one of the other senators, well, this is going to, depending on how you figure it, it's between $675 million and $785 million, I think, something like that, impact. What are the local governments going to do? And the response was, well, they can cut fat, and we all know we've been through that. They can reduce services, or they can raise their millage rates to make up for it, which I thought, in my opinion, was so hypocritical, because if the whole thing is to give a tax break, why would you give a tax break if you're figuring that somebody else is going to have to raise the taxes back in order to null out the impact? I mean, that, to me, is totally disingenuous. But that was the response. It's a deal of, we're going to give the tax break, and if they have to raise it to not lose services, well, hell, that's not on our fault.
I saw an earlier version of the bill or something that had a caveat about not raising the millage rate or something in it.
No, sir.
Didn't pass.
No, sir. I mean, that's, they wouldn't do that, because they know you got to have the flexibility to make it work, to be able to deliver what you have to deliver in your responsibilities. And so, they didn't want to limit your ability to do that, they just, unfortunately, they just want to be able to say that they were behind the tax cut, so they could give it back and you guys could be forced to take it back again.
Okay, Jerry. Any other questions of Jerry?
Jerry, what do you think's going to be the big issues coming up in the next legislative session?
You know, I really don't, I honestly don't know, Councilman, because the alliances between the leadership is still shifting. A lot of it's going to have to do with who's running for what in the next election. The House is so top-driven now that, and I don't know if the Speaker has made public what his issues are for next year. And I do want to mention one other thing, Mr. Mayor. I know that you all have already passed a resolution for extending the Memorial Highway designation for Fisk down to the southern borders. The House changed their procedures a little bit in the past. All we used to have to do, they had a kind of a major road naming bill, transportation designation, facilities designation bill, that we would add on things with the resolution and stuff. Now, they're going to want an individual bill filed by your local representative to do that, so we're going to need to talk to Representative Goodson, and I suspect, Mr. Mayor, you're going to need to ask him if he would please file a bill to do that. And, you know, there's still a little misinformation out there, that we're not talking about changing the road signs, anybody's address.
Right.
Or that kind of stuff. And as a matter of fact, it won't cost the state a thing, because the current road designation sign that we have up around Rosa Jones, between the city of Rockledge and Cocoa, we can just pick up that, I think the DOT can pick up that sign and move it down to the south end of Fisk, because the whole road will be, and they won't need that sign up there anymore. So, they can accomplish it without even costing them anything.
Right.
Would that be one of Representative Goodson's six bills?
Well, I don't know that they made that decision yet. It depends on whether they want to, and honestly, whether they want to discourage those road designations, because if they do want to discourage them, they'll make it one of his numbered bills, one of his counted bills. I don't think in the end they will get to that, but, and, you know, there's a requirement, I was talking to staff the other day about it, because I thought they were going to have a new form, and they haven't gotten, some of the staff wants a form, but they haven't required a form yet, like they did for appropriations and those kind of things. But it has to be somebody that's dead, it has to be somebody that has had some historical significance to Florida, and they would like it to be a Floridian, but it's not a requirement. And I explained to them, we were talking about Dr. Martin Luther King, and I said, "Are we going to need to draft up a whole lot of history on that?" And the lady said, "No, I think I can Google that and get that down on the form pretty good." So, the bottom line is, she said, "But you are going to have to have your local representative ask for it and file a bill to do it."
Okay.
So, that's where we are on that.
Okay.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity and look forward, and also, session's going to be early this year. It starts in January. The Legislative Delegation meeting is September 20. I've already asked them to put Dr. Fettro on the agenda for that. Brenda, you've got the form that you're going to fill out for them and get into Kayla, right? Okay. So, I think we're good there, but we had a very short break this summer, and we're at it again pretty quickly with September meeting, starting like the 12th of September.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, financial budget report, May and June of 2017. Need a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of May and June 2017.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Public hearings, ordinance, and resolutions, we have none. Reports from boards and committees. Mr. Daskey, do you want this one?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. Fire employees, general employees, and police employees retirement boards, minutes of joint meeting on May 18, 2017. Planning Commission, minutes of regular meeting on June 6, 2017. The Council on Finance and Budget Committee, minutes of the meeting on June 8, 2017, and minutes of meeting on June 21, 2017, and minutes of meeting on June 28, 2017. Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of special meeting on June 19, 2017. The Board of Adjustment, minutes of meeting on June 20, 2017. Planning Commission, minutes of meeting on July 11, 2017. General Employees Retirement Board, minutes of a special meeting on July 12, 2017, and to consider independently any recommendations contained within.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, our first recommendation, Planning Commission, approval of site plan Ventura at Turtle Creek.
Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, so, what you have before you is the approval of site plan for Ventura at Turtle Creek. This site plan was originally approved in 2006 during the real estate boom. During that time, half of the units were built and the other half was not. All of the infrastructure is currently in place, but the buildings were never built. We are back on the upswing with real estate, and now we have them coming back, and they're now asking for 194 units, which is less than they were originally granted, and so, that's the reason it's before you tonight, is because they're actually reducing the number of units that they were originally approved for.
How many units are reducing it by?
I believe it's, yeah.
Forty?
Forty-six.
Forty-six units. That's significant.
Are they going to keep the opportunity to build those last units?
That has not been discussed yet, but I do have the engineer of record here, if you would like to have her answer any questions.
Just curious, is this the footprint that was approved in 2006?
The infrastructure is the same, so all of the pavement and all of the piping and everything underground, the way they're, yes, it has paved, been paved, but the actual, like, shape of the buildings, it might change a little bit.
Is this still Pulte, who started our original project?
It was all under Pulte. I don't know if that is the same or not, no.
Oh, it's another developer now? Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions, Alex?
No.
We're looking for an approval of the site plan.
I have one question.
Sure, go ahead.
This additional exit, I'm assuming it's going to be a right turn only?
Onto Barnes?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Right in, right out.
Right in, right out. There's no, with the new roadway, there's no way to do it other than that.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Any other questions? Sean, you understand what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
How about down here, Dwayne?
Yep.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Move to approve the site plan for Ventura at Turtle Creek, as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Let me find my place here. Okay. Council, Finance, and Budget Committee, recommendation creation of the Department of Public Safety. Recommend to council the creation of Department of Public Safety and advancing the Director of Public Safety position. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, as some of you heard in Finance and Budget, this conversation began during the strategic planning process that we undertook in January and February of this year, where succession planning was a topic of conversation. And although we had some retirements from the city last year, we have a few more facing us. One has already taken place, but Fire Chief is planning his retirement early next calendar year. And so, from that discussion, I spoke with both the chiefs extensively in the last six months or so. Both chiefs did a lot of research around the state of Florida, and frankly, around the country, but, so, from those conversations and that research, a new Department of Public Safety is what we're recommending as a very good fit for this city. Both chiefs and I have talked with firefighters and police, but certainly the firefighters, and frankly, the feedback I've gotten is positive. They're looking for the additional accountability and structure, training opportunities, and the like. So, so far, it seems to be, I'll go as far as to say, well-received. I think the chief would agree. But, in our charter, for any new department, it must come before council, and for council to approve an additional department to be created, as well as asking for the creation of a Director of Public Safety position to be created. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, and everybody that's on the, two-thirds of this board is on the Finance Committee. And we've gone over this in detail for several meetings. So, really, I'm gonna leave it up to the three of you that are not on the committee that might be seeing this for the first time, and see if you guys have any questions. Dr. Smith, Dr. Ferguson, and Dr. Hartzell. You guys okay with this?
Yes.
I'm just wondering what points really stood out as concerns, and just put those on the table, so we all have them aired out.
What points went out?
Were of concern, might have been impediments to its implementation, cost factors, anything like that, that might be of interest.
Sure. Councilman Hartzell, as we carefully reviewed all of that, the goal is to have it be almost entirely budget-neutral. Once Fire Chief retires, there would be a Deputy Chief of Fire Operations at a lesser salary. So, the agencies would remain the same, so to speak, police, fire, with deputy chiefs, if you will, of both agencies, and one leader. That would be the department, pardon me, the Director of Public Safety. Other concerns, again, were for the current employees. And as I expressed, we've done a lot of, I'll say, networking with the existing employees because we wanted to be sure that they understood, first and foremost, the structure that we were proposing. And then with that structure, if it was approved, were they a fan of it or not? And, again, the feedback is positive, looking for the training opportunities, the accountability, the structure. I won't say a name, but quite frankly, one firefighter said, great, so we're gonna have a strategic plan and a vision for the future for fire. And, so again, just very excited about it. I don't know if the chief wanted to add anything, but very excited. So, that, hopefully that answers your question.
Okay.
And we're also looking for both departments to work together more closely, too. And we think this is gonna help.
Yeah, but nothing really jumped up as thorny issue that would have come in the way?
I don't think so.
I didn't have any, but I'll let Finance and Budget say.
I know there was a retired member of the Fire Department who was given bad information, and he thought it was valid. And he was pretty verbal. And I've gotta tell you, I saw Saturday morning at the volunteer breakfast, Chief Lasada and him talking, and I stayed away, other side of the room stayed away. And when they finished talking, they shook hands. So, I'm thinking, this probably ended better than I was hoping. And I had a chance to talk to my friend afterwards, and he said, I've never been so embarrassed to get so much bad information. And he goes, I've gotta tell you, I'm on board. And having been a member of a department that they talked once about melding with another department, there is some tension, there is some history. And he was concerned that that was gonna be lost. And when he came to me, he was in support of it. And I think it's a go.
Yep.
Okay, just wanted to have it on the table, just as we...
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neil?
I move to create the new Department of Public Safety and to create the Director of the Public Safety position within the city's structure.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion carries. Next recommendation, purchase of enterprise software solution and other computer equipment and software. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this item, as we conducted our strategic planning for the city in my first sixty, ninety days, the topic of the city's software was a hot topic. And so, we discussed it thoroughly and learned that the city's software system is a much older system, and frankly, is not getting the security updates, hasn't since, I believe, 2012, I believe it is. But, anyway, there are lots of issues with it. So, in doing, again, thorough research, began talking to a lot of cities in the county, cities throughout the state of Florida. We looked at the city of West Melbourne, did an entire bid process. We got that entire bid process that they conducted with all of the submissions. There were generally three companies which submitted and are in this business these days. We scrutinized that very, very significantly. Then, in addition to that, I've set up a committee of about ten to twelve employees, who would be the key users here at the city, basically by department, but there may be two or three in a respective department as well. So, those key users, we went to visit the city of West Melbourne and spent a little more than half a day there, and talked through as users, from their perspective. They've had it for about a year, I think to fourteen months or so now at West Melbourne. So, they have some good experiences, having used it for about a year to fourteen months. We talked through all of those items, strengths, weaknesses, if we go forward, things to look for, or how it got resolved, the timeliness of customer service from the company they selected. So, a whole host of items were discussed thoroughly, as well as their entire bid process reviewed very, very carefully. So, that was discussed during Finance and Budget Committee. But I would also, if council would indulge me, to ask the chief, as well as Mr. Tryne, the Finance Director, to come forward and just give you a little additional information in history, per Councilman Forster's suggestion in Budget and Finance, so that you can understand very, very thoroughly the months and almost years that this city has taken to research this item before you.
Chief Lasada?
Thank you, council. I'm trying to give you a brief snapshot of how we got to this point, to give you a little bit of an understanding of how we arrived tonight at this juncture. Eighteen months ago, Mr. McKnight requested I start looking into potential software solutions for the city. As Madam Manager has said, we were dealing with an aging system, and he recognized that fact. But he didn't want to make the purchase prior to the arrival of a new city manager. He wanted to have it ready to go, or at least some research had been done prior to her arrival. Rockledge, as some of you may know or have heard, we were utilizing an IMS suite of enterprise resource planning software for twenty-three years. This conversation wouldn't even have been possible last year. To run this system, you need VoIP, Voice Over Internet Protocol, and we now have that. So, we do have a lot of the backbone in place to even consider such a solution. So, as we began doing the research, newer technologies have evolved to offer more features to include security, flexibility, and greater ease of use. The transition to the new software would eliminate several aging pieces of equipment and allow the city to operate the new system in a Windows virtual environment, providing more consistency among its production systems. More consistency is gonna lead to additional operational efficiencies, and Matthew's gonna touch on those in just a few minutes here for you. Some of the, briefly on my end of them, that I saw, some of the examples of these efficiency gains would be a reduction in the number of backup systems that we currently manage and maintain, a reduction in the number of different operating systems being managed and maintained, a reduction in the number of user accounts each employee is required to manage. One additional noteworthy benefit of platform concerning platform consistency is the potential for improved system availability due to compatible hardware being available should a hardware failure occur. And we've had a couple of moments that have pretty much stopped us dead in our tracks briefly here at City Hall. Okay? So, in doing my due diligence, I was calling around, and West Melbourne was just beginning their process, as the city manager said. And I was able to jump in on that with them and kind of follow them through the process and then implementation. And they did utilize a very extensive vendor selection process. West Melbourne received four proposals. This is a small arena we're operating in, there's not many, many vendors in this arena. And during the proposals' duration, one of the companies merged, so it was down to three. Those companies who responded were as follows, Essella, BSNA, and then New World Tyler Technologies, which we have a derivative of at the Police Department. So, those are the three that they looked at. They did site visits, evaluations, they did demonstration evaluations, et cetera. The respondents, the three companies left, were required to include a list of existing customer contacts as part of their proposal. Using these lists, numerous existing customers from each potential vendor were contacted by phone and asked to provide feedback on both the software solution as well as the company itself. Additionally, the city's intention was to visit at least one customer from each vendor to get a firsthand view of the software used and collect as much information as possible. I personally have spoke to several municipalities from north to south Florida, and the endorsements have been ringing. I'll share those with you if you'd like, but they really like the product. It's night and day compared to what we have. And I want, I think it's important for you to understand what we're talking about here. There is not a police or fire package. This is strictly a solution that deals with HR payroll, budget, general ledger, accounts receivable in fixed assets, code enforcement, and building inspections and building permits. For fire and police, our end of it, I'm not gonna get into it too much, is basically payroll and our budgeting process. That's gonna be very beneficial to us, but Matthew will touch on the core issues, if you will. So, they got these proposals, they're doing their due diligence, and they were evaluated based on their responsiveness. Software solution meets the needs of the city. Interface internally used as well as data migration, that's gonna be huge, and they're gonna migrate all our data from the last ten years as part of the process. Okay? We covered the areas that are gonna benefit the city. BSNA scored by far the highest, and they were also, coincidentally, the most reasonably priced. The two components, there's a wide price range between BSNA and Essella, and I'm not always saying low bid's always the best, but in doing our due diligence and speaking to several customers throughout the state, that appears to be the case. Spoke with the West Melbourne City Manager, he said it was the smoothest software transition he's ever gone through. As a city manager, he's gone through a couple. They're very happy with the software, and more importantly, they're very happy with the customer service. And again, just to repeat the point, we vetted it through multiple customers throughout the state, and it's very hard to find anybody to have, to say a negative word about it. So, with that said, I'm gonna ask Matthew to kind of get into the weeds a little bit about how it's gonna save time and money for the city. Matthew?
Good evening.
Good evening, Matthew.
The chief said so much of what we, what was gone through in this process, and so, I'd like to, you know, touch on some additional data, but for the most part, everything he said covers the majority of it. When I came to the city, one of the first people I spoke with was Chief Lasada, and one of the very first things we talked about was the software issue. He identified that this was a significant issue. I spoke with the city management at that time, and they indicated as well. I've met with our IT department, and we've discussed the situation with IT, and we have some dire IT needs here at the city. So, this is not just a request for software. Software is a key component of it, but the Finance and Budget Committee also approved, or recommended, I should say, the purchase of a server and ancillary hardware and some other items that are going to go into finding a technology solution for the whole city to move forward and be a lot more reliable, provide better service to the taxpayers, reduce risk, and have better access to data for our department heads and our city manager and everybody else to make decisions. Currently, the data that the department heads receive is, you know, ten to forty-five days old to make decisions. And in the modern-day environment, that's just a very difficult way to make decisions and constantly having to either go by memory on data or request data from the Finance and Department. So, this is a citywide enterprise software solution as well as hardware solution. It will provide real-time, department heads will be able to see real-time data. It will integrate with Microsoft Office to enable reporting, budgeting, all kinds of different functions will go much more smoothly. Reporting will be much more simplistic. Invoicing and transaction will be, transacting will be more accurate and timely. We will be able to improve our customer service, especially in the realm of business conducted at City Hall. Also, it will integrate with GIS software to aid wastewater, stormwater, public works, planning and building departments. We're also moving towards a citywide server to be housed at the moment at the EOC. That will allow us to shore up some issues that we have historically. As far as the IT department goes, Chris Dyer and I have spoken in regards to where we currently sit. Currently, we're operating on a Windows Server 2003 version. The reason why we're on Windows Server 2003 is because the software we currently utilize will only run on Windows Server 2003, so we cannot upgrade. Some of the things we've touched on before, not to get too specific, is Windows Server 2003 reached its end of life over two years ago. It's no longer getting security updates, there's significant issues there. In addition, we have not received any software updates on that program since 2012. That being said, we'd like to move to a much more stable environment and provide the department heads the tools they need in the modern age to go ahead and make timely decisions. Some of the things that I think will help the employees and the citizens is, employees will be able to conduct self-service, so they'll be able to view their leave balances and pay stubs online. It will help communicate information to employees. Work orders for employee management to allow timely solving of issues discovered across the city will not only be able to tie to GIS data, so we could track that data, but will also be more timely and able to manage employees. We're looking at focusing on providing proactive services and reductions of non-value transactions is essentially what we're trying to do. Save our employees' time, reduce costs where we can to citizens by eliminating a lot of manual type of processes around the city that we currently have to conduct because our software just simply cannot keep up with the demands of the modern age.
Okay. All right, again, for the three of you who are not on the Finance Committee, this is something that we, and on the committee, the four of us on the committee have looked at, we've looked at this under several meetings. We were actually floored to realize that our finance is still doing stuff with pencil and paper, and that every time they do payroll, this system freezes up. This is something that probably should have been replaced in 2012, at the latest. It should have been replaced in 2012, when they stopped doing updates.
Didn't the system crash one day right before our meeting?
It did.
Yes. So, this is a problem, this is something that probably should have been addressed years ago, and it probably wasn't addressed years ago, maybe because of the problems we had with our budget at that time. Because this is not cheap, this is expensive, and this is something we decided to go to our reserves instead of waiting for our next budget year of October 1st. We decided that this was important enough that we go to our reserves now and pay for this out of our reserves and get this online as soon as possible. So, we don't have problems, especially with our payroll, which we're having a lot of problems with the payroll now. It's just amazing to me they're still doing stuff on our payroll in the 21st century with a piece, with a pencil and a piece of paper. Because we don't have a program or accounting program that will handle this. So, does anybody, Frank, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, Dr. Fettero, perhaps you're the best one to do this review for us, for everyone, how we decided to go about doing this without doing a bid process? And why are we doing it without a bid process?
Well, it, the easiest answer to that, Councilman, is that a bid process was sort of done for us, almost, with the review and close scrutiny that we, you heard that we did over the West Melbourne bid process. As you heard Chief and Mr. Tryne say, and myself, they did a thorough bid process, went out to bid, conducted the full process, got the four submissions, of which later became three, because two companies merged. three, because two companies merged. We have reviewed and evaluated all of those submissions. So in essence, we've sort of had the luxury of a bid process being conducted for us.
And one of those companies we wouldn't do business with anyway.
And, yes, I'm certainly not going to say the name at a public meeting, but yes. So anyway, so I want the public to know, we did an extensive evaluation, even before me coming to the city. Work had begun, research was conducted, the bid process reviewed. We continued to review that. Again, we went and conducted a site visit with 10 or 12 staff people here. We have, I would go as far as to say, left no stone unturned as part of our due diligence, our review of everything that's been presented or considered regarding these three companies, and as you've heard, are recommending BSNA as the best solution for this city. So we've just been very thorough, Councilman.
And, and also, Joe, our city attorney?
The law allows us to piggyback other cities, correct?
Yes.
And you, Mr. City Attorney, will do a thorough review of the contract before we?
Any and all contracts or something of this nature would come through my office, and we need to make sure that not only am I reviewing it, but the council has an opportunity to see any opinions that I come up with concerning the contract and whether any changes are necessary. Again, hopefully, we won't have those kind of problems, but, you know, that's what's going to happen.
Obviously, trying to avoid the type of situation the school board got itself into with their software.
Yes. I, I, I can, from personal knowledge, tell this council that the problem was not with the initial review by the attorney. There were modifications to the contract after the attorney's review, and they were never sent to the attorney for review. That was the problem.
I just want to make sure all ours are reviewed.
Anybody else have any questions on what we're about to do here today? Yes?
Just a couple of points. My brother's in charge of backup and security for a firm up in Jacksonville and their software. I was wondering if we had an off-site backup plan besides just saying it's in the safest place in the area?
Yes, we, we are, we currently do have an onsite and off-site backup plan, and we will continue that. Also included in the budget that, for, for this, the Finance and Budget Committee has, has recommended to the council. We are planning on doing a review of the EOC where the server is going to be housed. We started those discussions already, and we are looking at making sure as much as humanly possible that between city management, the IT department, and, and myself and others, that we will have physical securities, logical securities, access securities. We will beef up that, the area that's going to be housed, and as much as possible, prevent it from lightning attack and everything that we can. Nothing is 100% foolproof, and that is why we do have currently an, an off-site backup plan already in place, and we'll continue that when we move the server over to the EOC.
Yeah, his off-site plan for Jacksonville is Philadelphia.
Okay. We currently use Amazon Glacier, and so we, they, they have, you know, as you can imagine, data centers all over the world, so we currently utilize them as our backup.
And security? I use Norton, I mean, it's, protects me well. You've got similar safeguards on the?
Absolutely. We have physical security we're reviewing over at the EOC. I don't want to go into details about that, but we are going to, if you wish to talk about that, obviously, in another forum, I'd like to talk to you about that, but we are looking at beefing up the physical security, which is obviously of tantamount importance. You don't want anybody to have physical access to your server. And then we're also going to be looking at, you know, the, the logical securities and, and things that we can already have in play before we're reviewing those when we put them over there as well.
Okay. And one other thing, I wanted to ask if the city manager would make a report on the computer status instead of letting it just go on and on and on, not hearing about it. Maybe we can hear it as part of your annual report.
Absolutely. Are you interested in any of that this evening, or you mean for future meetings?
For future?
Oh, absolutely. Let's go see, I can tell you.
Just have, have a tab in there, an item in there, that you're going to report on that, because apparently it's slipped by a few years.
Yes, sir.
Many years.
I'd be happy to do that, Councilman.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, without a doubt, with the outstanding background information provided, the time that we are living in and where technology is leading us and where we are, I move to accept the recommendation to authorize the purchase of the enterprise software solution, the GIS software, the new servers, computer upgrade, and other hardware and software as required, utilizing the current general fund reserve. I'll put that in the form of a motion whenever it's time.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
If I can say this, I'm just appreciative of the thoroughness, of really, you know, exhausting this, and, and so we can all understand it. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other discussion?
Call for the question.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Frank.
I'll move to authorize the city manager and city attorney to review the contract for the purchase of the enterprise software and to bring that contract back to the council for, at a subsequent meeting for approval.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Just one.
Yes.
We already have a, a pretty fixed price on this, and I'm thinking if we do this, bringing it back to council, we already, the Budget and Finance Committee saw the dollars and cents values on this. By bringing it back to council, we push this back two more weeks, and after our server failed the last time, I'm thinking, server is better. Are we actually going to get any benefit out of looking at it? Or are we going to get, I mean, we've got the two. Do we need to look at it, or do we need to go forward?
After the city attorney makes his recommendations.
Say this is the contract, I'd hand it to you, they would be handing it to you, and you would say, "Sign it." Okay? If what you do is you do the legal review so that you can go through and find what in the boilerplate is and is not going to be beneficial to the city. We've gone through hundreds of contracts over the decades, and there is always something that is not advantageous to the public good in every major contract. It just happens. And that's why we negotiate, and that's why we review the contracts, and we bring back to you a, a final product. I will just give a cautionary tale. Anything that is hurried always has problems.
Well, I'm thinking, will we be able to hear this at our budget?
Workshop?
Our council workshop? Or are we going to have to wait till the end of August to vote on this? Because we don't have a regular council meeting in August, beginning of August. It goes to the third week, and it's a month from now.
About four weeks.
Yeah, the budget, the amount of money that this is going to cost, it should hopefully have some sort of ballpark figure and have that already taken care of before we even get to that point. There may be modifications up, up or down on that, but there, you know, there's going to need to be time to review the contract, take a look at the finances on it, just in the staff, discuss what's good, what's bad for each department, and everybody's going to be using it, and how we want to change it, and what kind of protections we want.
Maybe a better question would be, would it be able to be ready for our August regular council meeting?
I can only speak for myself and the staff, possibly. You know, they probably don't want me to. But I can speak for myself, and once I have it, I'll turn it around as quick as possible, depending upon the nature of the beast, how many pages, how many provisions, you know, what is in there. However, I cannot speak for the software company, and we've had some leases and contracts that just flew right through. Other ones, it just took months and months to get the negotiations done with the other side.
So we probably need this four weeks to do our due diligence, let the city attorney do his due diligence, the city manager do her due diligence, Chief Lasada do his due diligence, and hopefully everything can be ready for us in that four weeks. And we look at, we look at all the provisions the city attorney's changed at that time, and we move forward. In the meantime, with the approval of this tonight, you have, you're going to have the authority to move forward with getting a fixed cost.
Mr. Chairman, I'll call a question.
Okay.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Recommendation: Revision of City Employee Compensation. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As Finance and Budget heard, there was a discussion of a potential increase for employees. At that time, in the meeting, shared with the count, with the Finance and Budget that the CPI is approximately 1.9, and depending on which source you look at, whether or not energy or food or other types of variables are in that calculator, it, it might vary ever so slightly, but our CPA and Finance Director, Mr. Tryne, has provided me this information, and so it's at 1.9. And so our recommendation and, and the Finance and Budget Committee's discussion was at 2%. Back to you.
Anybody have any questions on the 2%? This is something we discussed in Finance as well, had at least two meetings on it. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. O'Neill?
I move to authorize a pay increase of 2% for city employees.
We have a motion?
Second for discussion.
Have a second discussion. Go ahead.
Dr. Fettro, we had discussed at one point that, that there is, it's not necessarily going to be a flat 2% across the board, right? That, that there are some inequities based on our last, what do you call it, study?
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Yes, there was a comp study done that concluded, I, I want to say, late summer, early fall last year, or maybe, so that during union negotiations, the discussions began, and then I concluded with one union in probably February, March of this year, and we have union discussions open now. So yes, to answer your direct question, there were some, I'll say, market adjustments in some positions within the city that warranted a little bigger increase, if you will, just to get them up to market. And so, yes, frankly, the budget you all will see in a couple of weeks has some small latitude in there to continue to implement the comp study as the city received it. So yes, we can do that, again, unless you all direct me otherwise.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say this. I think we have one of the finest, hard-working staff you can find anywhere, and I think that the 2% is a bad minimum. I wish we could do more. I just want to make, let me say it, I, I, no question about it, and I call for the question on the motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next recommendation: authorizing staff to draft budget amendments for fiscal year 2017. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Gentlemen, during Finance and Budget, as you all heard, the, I was able, we were able to project how the finances for 2017 will likely end up at year-end. And so, in this fiscal year, it was budgeted for $464,000 to be earmarked out of reserves in the event that we needed it. Well, I'm happy to report, we will not need those funds for this fiscal year. In addition to that, we are projecting that we will end up in the black. At the time of Finance and Budget, it was about $881,000. I would, again, just to be conservative, as I am, I would say at least $800,000 in the black. So at that time, in discussion with Finance and Budget, there were a couple of capital items that were in the 2018 budget request. Finance and Budget recommended, why don't we go ahead and purchase some of that this year, since we'll have a few dollars of room this year in which to do that. So that is the recommendation from Finance and Budget in that particularly a Ford F-150 truck and a 40-foot articulated boom, that would be considered, and if there are one or two other items that you also choose, we could certainly do that. But it was simply, if approved, allowing us to bring a budget amendment forward to you all to make those purchases this fiscal year versus the pressure on the 2018 budget. Back to you, Mayor.
Mr. Chairman?
Keep in mind, this is a preliminary. Those numbers that she gave you, we still got two and a half months left in this budget year. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move to accept the recommendation, authorize staff to draft a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2017 budget. Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a question, we were off by $800,000 on our last budget estimates.
I don't, I would say off. There were some savings in certain areas.
Was part of it the Bree Swept related funds?
Actually, that's out of, well, I wouldn't say there was a savings necessarily. I mean, maybe it would be, but it, it's honestly quite a conservative approach. Staff would probably tell you...
Better than running over.
Staff would probably tell you, I'm, I'm a, I'm a tightwad. I'm very conservative. I've been pretty strict on them. We've gotten through the third quarter of this fiscal year, and I frankly said to them, as a first-year city manager, it is paramount that I have a, end the year in the black. Otherwise, you all are going to look at me like, what kind of manager have we hired? One who can't operate a, a city and, and end up in the black. So that was our goal, and as a team, they've embraced that. I'm very proud of staff. They've done a great job of being very fiscally conservative. So I'm, I'm proud to be here, proud to oversee this staff, and they are really managing every penny. I wouldn't say it was a budget that was off that dramatically, Councilman, but it's just a very conservative fiscal approach.
You exceeded our expectations, so...
Well, thank you, Councilman. It's a team effort.
To be honest, I don't think there's been many years that we ended in the red. There's been a couple, but not many.
True.
Since I've been around in 1999.
I've been on the Budget Finance Committee for the last 11 years, and I don't think we've hit the red one time.
Yeah, that's true.
No, it's just how close you are.
Yeah, you're close.
Occasionally close, but typically, we manage to at least hang on to our reserve funds that were budgeted for spending without getting too deep into those, so...
Okay, did we have a motion on this, Lisa? Or did I not? I did have a motion, I had a second. Do we have any further discussion?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I can, and 40-foot articulated boom. What is that, please?
Ken?
It's a cool piece of equipment. No, Ken. Ken, would you give us a little description, please?
Sure, go ahead.
It is a four-wheel drive, it has a bucket, it will hold two bins, and...
Oh, okay.
It's a lift. Got it. It's an articulated.
Got it.
And right now, he's borrowing the one that Wastewater has, and Jimmy's tired of him borrowing his.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Recommendation: Tentative millage, Adverland tax rate. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As discussed at Finance and Budget, again, the message that I got was that the city certainly wished to offer similar level of services to the citizens. This city has historically been able, in the last, I'll say, two to three years, to bring the millage rate down ever so slightly. Two years ago, it was 6.34. This, then it was 6.25, and the, the recommendation is to take it to 6.20 for fiscal year 18. And again, just as you heard legislatively, the citizens will vote next fall regarding an additional homestead exemption, which will reduce the city's revenues and which to provide services, but the 6.20 was the recommendation before you all from Finance and Budget.
Okay, keep in mind, this is a preliminary, and this could change, oh, it could, it could continue to come down after our workshop if we so choose. We cannot raise it above the 6.20, but it can be lowered more after our workshop in August. Okay? Everybody understand that? Does anybody have any problem with the 6.20? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
Move to establish a tentative millage rate of 6.20 mils and to report the same to the Brevard County Property Appraiser and the State of Florida.
Second.
Do we have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to offer their resolution?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I offer Resolution 2017-791 to be read in its entirety.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney?
Resolution number 2017-791. Resolution of the Rockledge City Council advising the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the rolled-back millage rate of the city of Rockledge for the taxable year 2017, the proposed millage rate of said city for the taxable year 2017. for the taxable year 2017, the proposed millage rate of said city for the taxable year 2017, and the time and place of the first public hearing on the proposed 2017 to 2018 fiscal year budget for said city. Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida as follows. Section 1, the City of Rockledge does hereby advise the Brevard County Property Appraiser of the following. A, based upon information certified to the City of Rockledge by the Brevard County Property Appraiser, the rolled-back millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2017 is $5.9729 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. B, the proposed millage rate of the City of Rockledge for the taxable year 2017 is $6.20 per $1,000 of assessed valuation. C, the first public meeting to consider the tentative budget for the 2017-2018 fiscal year of the City of Rockledge and to consider the aforementioned proposed millage rate will be held Wednesday, September 6, 2017, at 6:00 PM in the council meeting room in the Rockledge City Hall, 1600 Huntington Lane, Rockledge, Florida. Section 2, that the Finance Director of the City of Rockledge is hereby instructed to furnish a certified copy of this resolution to Brevard County Property Appraiser within 35 days of said property appraiser's certification of the 2017 taxable value of properties within the jurisdiction of the City of Rockledge, passed and adopted at a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Rockledge, Florida, this 19th day of July, 2017.
Mr. O'Neil.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, let's move on to revisions to building and permitting fees. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. During the Finance and Budget Committee meetings, they had extensive information provided of the current fees of Rockledge in addition to other municipalities and Brevard County. So there was an extensive comparative chart created by which to review this information. So as a part of that, Rockledge is either the lowest in the county or extremely low of all of those fees. And frankly, unfortunately, the current fee revenue does not cover the cost of the operations of the Building and Permitting Department for the city. So there was some concern expressed there. In the conversation, it was recommended that implementation, if approved, be done beginning September 1st. However, with further research, there needs to be a rewrite of the ordinance, so we might need a little more time. Therefore, we would recommend respectfully that the council, if approved, that the implementation date would be October 1 of 17.
Really?
Yeah.
Again, for those of you that were not on the Finance Committee meeting, there's three of you. We looked into this, and we felt like that the building department should be paying for itself. And it used to pay for itself back in the early 2000s, but since the crash and it started coming back up again, building, it has not been paying for itself. The taxpayers of Rockledge have been paying the difference. So we felt like that the builders and developers should be paying for our building department. They're the ones using it, and that's the reason we've set up this increase, and you have it in your package, and everybody has looked at it. And I think we're still close to the cheapest in the county, even with the increase.
Yes.
Which I don't mind being the cheapest in Brevard County, I like that, but I think it should still pay for itself. Any questions from anybody? I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to increase the building and permitting fees as presented by staff, including specifically one-half of a non-refundable plan review, as well as the implementation of those fees by October 1, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, revisions to stormwater rate structure. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, through the Finance and Budget Committee meetings, careful research was done regarding the stormwater fees with the city, and a chart, of course, is in your packet. The city is the lowest fees in the county, and even if this is approved this evening, it will still be the lowest in the county. However, it's not just because we're the lowest in the county that is a reason to increase fees. There are significant stormwater projects before this city. Mr. Poole, can, if you need specific information regarding which project, we certainly can talk about that. But the city does one or two significant projects, or tries to, each year. As you can imagine, they're very expensive. So we have several projects on tap to be done. Additionally, there are requirements on each city in the county, as well as Brevard County, to do certain things to meet their total maximum daily load requirements and reductions of nutrients going into the Indian River Lagoon. And I'm not an engineer, so I'm not going to try and explain that, but it's quite an extensive requirement of cities in Brevard County. So those are the reasons where staff is recommending, or recommended to Finance and Budget, and subsequently Finance and Budget is recommending to full council for approval.
And the rate increase is 50 cents this year and 25 cents next year, so a total of 75 cents over a two-year period.
So if somebody wants that annualized, Mayor, that's only $6 per household per year.
Right.
Just a discussion item or something to consider. By not keeping up, it's simply, it's a lot like Brevard County and the roads. You're going to have to do it, whether it's today or tomorrow. If you don't do it today, then you have to pay for today's and tomorrow's tomorrow. If you watch the news, as of late, we had another local municipality just triple-
Yes.
-their stormwater rates because there are millions of dollars in arrears. They haven't done anything for years to keep up with their projects. Therefore, they're having to, not 50 cents, but triple the rate.
Yeah, they're at $16 a month, I think, now, aren't they?
So it's going huge. And it only makes sense that as we need to do it, we do it.
Might not be on there yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's not on here yet.
Always cheaper to keep up with it gradually than to get dumped on with it later. We've already done the extensive stormwater preparations. It's already in place. We have to maintain it as well.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move to accept the recommendation to increase the stormwater rates by 50 cents this year and additional 25 cents next year. Second.
We have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, our Community CRA, no recommendations. Board of Adjustment, no recommendation. Planning Commission, rezoning of Huntington Estates from M1 to R2. City Manager.
As Alex makes her way up here, yes, Mayor, that is just to our north, Huntington Estates. Actually, quite frankly, construction has begun, but 20 single-family homes had previously been approved to be built at that location, and we're recommending to sort of clean up, so to speak, the zoning from the M1 to the R2, which is the single-family residential.
Housecleaning.
Yeah.
That's exactly right. Yeah, industrial doesn't make for getting a mortgage very easily when you're going to try and get a single-family mortgage, you know? When they say, oh, it's industrial, and they go, oh, you're going to buy a single-family home. It just doesn't pair up well. So this is a housekeeping measure to take it from industrial to R2, which is single-family residential, which allows for them to have their single-family homes and get a mortgage. And it's all in line with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Anybody have any questions of Alex? At this time, I open this up for the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this rezoning of Huntington Lakes? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on the rezoning of Huntington Lakes? Seeing none, I close the public opinion. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Dasky.
Move to recommend approval of the rezoning of Huntington Estates from M1 to R2.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, we're going to take a break. We're going to come back at 7:25. Meeting back order at 7:25. Where'd I leave all that?
Gee.
Gee. General Employees Retirement Board, recommendation ordinance providing for an option for an executive irrevocable opt-out of the Rockledge General Employees Retirement Plan. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, and I might invite the City Attorney to say a word or two if he wishes. But essentially, in the contract negotiations with the City Attorney and myself, the council was generous enough to offer an opt-out option for the incoming city manager. And so, this is working with the Pension Board to, I'll say, make this official, if you will, and allow this to happen. I don't know if Mr. City Attorney wants to add anything, but that's essentially what it is.
The provision was in the contract for equity's sake. The city manager at the time had a number of retirement accounts from prior government employment, and it's not costing the city an extra dime. Whatever she would have received going into the employment plan here, she's going to receive and allow her to place it into her existing accounts. That's what we've got. That's what this is for. However, we need to have the provision in the ordinance.
Mr. Dasky, I'm looking for a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, move to authorize a first reading of the ordinance providing for an executive option to opt-out of the Rockledge General Employees Retirement Plan in a subsequent meeting of Rockledge City Council.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion?
Just one note. I looked at this, I went online the other day, the average tenure of a city manager in Florida. Okay, they don't, Rockledge is by far the anomaly, having two city managers since our, that form of government. The average is three to seven years. It only makes sense, if you're doing that as a vocation, that you do it the way she's attempting to do it. Otherwise, and we don't have 30-year city managers as the norm. We had just had two 30-year city employees. That's not the scenario, so.
That doesn't mean we want you to leave in three years.
Thank you. That doesn't mean I want to go anywhere anytime soon either. But thank you. I want to beat that average.
I didn't feel this request was the least bit out of line, so.
For those of you in the audience, we're 130 years old, the city. We've only had, she's only the third city manager we've ever had, and which is unheard of. For our second city manager, who just left in December, I always tell the story, for the 31 years he was here, there was 13 city managers in the City of Cocoa. At the same time, we had one city manager in Rockledge. That's the difference in the governments. Okay, we have a motion? We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Reappointments and appointments. Deputy Mayor O'Neil.
Yes, sir. For the Board of Adjustment, I move to appoint William Ellis by acclamation to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Is he here, Mr. William Ellis? Nope. Okay. Code enforcement?
Yes, sir. This is an interesting one. Last Thursday, at the TPO meeting, I met David Wilkerson. Came up to him, he told me he just moved to the city, and it's an amazing thing, we have a vacancy for an engineer on that board. He's an engineer, and he has past government code enforcement experience in Collier County. And as soon as he told me what he did and what he'd done, I'd like to be on the board. And that was six days ago. David, do you want to stand up for just a second? He's here.
Oh, great. Welcome aboard. I'll retrain him.
But anyhow, I'm tickled to death. We got, we finally got an engineer on that board, so it is my honor to move to appoint David Wilkerson by acclamation to the Code Enforcement Board.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Welcome to Rockledge.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you.
The final one-
But hang on a minute. There's nobody for this. City Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was recently informed that the one applicant that you have, the application for Mr. Neil Frye, he is actually moving out of the area very soon, so he will not be eligible to serve in that capacity.
Okay. All right, that's all we have for that, then. Unfinished business, none. Consent business, Mr. Dasky.
Mr. Chairman, move for the approval of these consent business items. A is travel authorization to the Florida League of Cities Federal Action Strike Team, October 10 through the 12, Washington, DC, for Councilman, Deputy Councilman Mayor O'Neil. I'm a mouthful, sorry about that.
Doctor Deputy Councilman Mayor.
B, approval for declaration of surplus property for the Police Department. C, purchase of replacement vehicle for the Police Department. D, inter-local agreement with the City of Cocoa for crossing guard services for 2017 and 18 school year for the Police Department. E is the approval for two one-year extensions of recycling services agreement with Waste Management, Inc. of Florida for the Public Works Department. F is invoice for annual July 4 event, Brevard Symphony Orchestra, for the city manager. G, approval of donation of $500 for the police forfeiture from the Police Forfeiture Fund to the Rockledge Youth Football and Cheerleading League for the Police Department. H, approval of purchase of Ford F-150 4x4 pickup truck for the Public Works. And I, approval of special event, Indian River New Year, New U 5K race, Saturday, January 6, 2018, for the Rockledge High School Track and Cross Country Program.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. This is consent business, there is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. New business, action. Approval of professional service agreement, Community Development Strategies Incorporated. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is a professional services agreement. The owner of said company, Development Strategies, Inc., is in the audience, Joan Yunkala. So she is here. But the goal would be to have her conduct certain services with deliverables and timelines and the like clearly spelled out in a task order, if you also chose to approve this professional services agreement. We're aggressively, with Alex and I and others aggressively trying to bring economic development activities into the city, and some other things you want to say a word or two about all of the things that, if approved, Joan would be working on?
One of the other things that we have coming up this year, and some of you might remember this, is about 10 years ago, we went through the year process, and it's that time again. And back then, it was Dawn and myself, and now, it's just me. So definitely, it is, it is definitely, the year process is, it's called the Evaluation and Appraisal Report. Basically, what it is, is it's a report card that's done every 10 years to evaluate how the city is growing. Are we following our comprehensive plan, are we not? And what are the goals and objectives for the next 10 years moving forward? Just that?
Got it.
Okay. So it's a pretty big undertaking, and it usually takes about 12 to 18 months to get that accomplished. So that is just one of the things that would probably be on her radar.
Okay. Do you have any question? Anybody have any questions of Alex?
Just a comment. I've served on the Planning Commission for 20 years. I went through the year report twice. That is a very labor-intensive item to produce. She couldn't do it by herself unless you just let her, that's all she was going to have to do, and you just pass her a job to somebody else. So it's not an option that we approve this.
All right. I'm looking for a motion on this, then.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask, Yunkala, is that how, am I?
Yunkala.
Yunkala. If she, just give us a one-minute summary of her-
Come forward.
...qualifications, experience.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Joan Yunkala, 1322 Lemer Lane, Melbourne, Florida.
Say that last name again.
Yunkala.
Yunkala.
Yunkala?
Yunkala.
Yunkala?
Yunkala?
1322 Lemer Lane, Melbourne, Florida.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, good evening. I used to work for the city of Cocoa recently. That ended in January 2017. Decided to pick up where I left off some years ago, working in consultancy. My experience before that was working for Broward County down in South Florida for about five and a half years. Previously with Cocoa, it was about five years. I have a Bachelor's of Urban and Regional Planning with a minor in public administration. I have brought a lot of economic development activity to the city of Cocoa, and likewise to Broward County. I've gotten to work on state deals, county deals, and city deals as well. I've done everything from redevelop the building permit fees at the city of Cocoa, to planning projects, site plan approvals, pre-application meetings, incentive deals, program development, you name it.
Okay. Any other questions, Frank?
Here and go.
Anybody have any questions of Joan? Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Move to approve the agreement with Community Development Strategies, Inc.
We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. You're hired. Discussion: Potential uses of Wes McGruder property. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think we have a picture, an aerial picture available. Okay. So, I don't, I didn't bring a pointer, but maybe.
Oh.
Anyway, you can see about two-thirds down on the right, the word McGruder Avenue. So if you come directly left or west, that, those, that's kind of the Wes McGruder Avenue. Thank you, if you will. Okay. So, I think we have Rockledge Gardens in the house as well. Good evening. But this conversation started with, with Rockledge Gardens, quite honestly, and the city attorney, Alex, and myself. So, maybe let Alex expand on that.
So, good evening. What we have here is, we have roughly, it's, okay, roughly, we have about 18,000 square feet here. The interesting part of this is that we own it outright by title. It is not right-of-way, it is ours. So, is that correct, Jo?
Yes.
You answering for them?
No. So.
Keeps it going. I mean, I mean, over the number of years I was married, I got used to women answering for me. McGruder is one of the, we own it by deed titles in the city of Rockledge. It is cut off by the FEC right-of-way to the west. It fronts US 1 to the other end. It is serving the purpose of being a blocked-off, non-used street that nobody goes in, nobody gets out, nobody gets to use, and it's just sitting there. And there, I guess the Rockledge Garden people are interested in it. Again, we would have to go through the process of making the determination that it is unnecessary for public use, and the various other statutes.
Right. So, so what we did is, in, in opening the dialogue with Rockledge Gardens, and also with executive staff, was trying to figure out, you know, what, what is its highest and best use? And we got feedback from everyone, and of course, you know, like our wastewater department goes, oh, we could put a lift station there. And like, you know, stormwater says, oh, well, you know, we could put a retention pond there. And so, there's all these different ideas. And we're just looking for a, a direction that council would like to take or not take in regards to it.
Okay. I'm very familiar with that property. And for those of you in the audience that don't realize that we own a cemetery on the other side of the tracks. And that's really.
Right there. That little triangle right there goes into the.
It's really, it's, it's our access to our cemetery, and, which we do not keep up, by the way. I think there's only six grave sites in the cemetery, and there's 650 plots in there. But I don't think the city should ever sell that. I think we should hold that thing until eternity. But I have no problem with Rockledge Gardens using it. And to whatever you can work out with them, Mr. City Attorney, a land lease, or whatever you want to do with them, or.
We can, we can do that. The council's direction is to lease it. We can put a term of lease together for Rockledge Gardens and use it however long we can.
Or you work out some, some kind of agreement with Rockledge Gardens back there to clean it up for us, and then use it for parking, or use it for storing, whatever you want to do with it. As long as we have a fence on the south side.
Yeah. Mary, what's the old saying?
Because we had to.
You're going to need a dargon for a good fence for that.
We had to defend this property in court a few years ago.
Then we prevailed.
We prevailed. And we had to prove that this was our property. And we did prove this is our property. And there is a fence up there, and I hope that fence never gets taken down, and that south property owner never realizes that he thinks that he might own that, but that's our property. And that's something we need to keep, in my opinion, forever and ever and ever. Do we need to put a caveat in there that if, if we're going to work out some sort of a deal with Rockledge Gardens to use it, as far as allowing us access so we can get over to? Oh, yeah. That city attorney, we have a, we have.
This is the very, very beginning. We're going to, we'll have to sit down, negotiate an agreement, term, how much rent's going to be paid, and access of the owner of the property, for whatever reasons, to and from the leaseholder. So, you know, that being said, you're just telling me to sit down with the people from Rockledge Garden and see if we can work out a deal.
Exactly. That's right.
I wholly support this. Rockledge Gardens has been nothing but a great community partner for as long as I can remember. And I've been in Rockledge now just over 30 years. Been a great partner. And it's not serving us any purpose, other than access to a cemetery.
Well, it does have a reuse line running underneath it, too.
And so, we're getting some of that, but somebody can use it for a benefit.
Yeah, for that, you know, to address the mayor's access interest to the cemetery, we don't have a railroad cut.
I know we don't.
We can't go across the railroad, and.
You can't legally go across the railroad.
And if you don't have legal access across the railroad, you get run over, killed.
But you can look both ways and run across the railroad. Long been there.
However, as for the cemetery, World War I veterans are buried in there.
Yes.
We have no idea exactly how many records that were. We go to some.
Yes, we do. Someday, we're going to, we're going to address it, and we're going to, we're going to doll that place up. I just don't know when.
Is this something you can live with?
Mr. Chairman?
It would be very attractive. What?
I agree with Mr. O'Neill. Anything we can do to help Rockledge Gardens would be nice. I also see that the plant, the wastewater shows that there might be useful purpose in using that for extending sewer down to the south end of Rockledge.
Correct.
And would we be able to work that out in conjunction with?
We'll retain the rights for sewers, utilities, so forth, over a certain portion.
Right.
Always do that. Always have the people of Public Works tell me what they're going to need to keep.
I just remember we had to buy a big chunk of land for the briefs wet, and that, this we already own.
Yeah, but that was, that was something totally different.
The access in the right-of-way.
Yeah, we were, yeah, let's get sure the property we purchased. I would be glad we were.
Do we need a motion on this?
No, I'm referring to the Reinhardt property.
Okay, I think, I think there's consensus to direct the city manager to work with Rockledge Gardens and Alex and city manager and work something out.
And once I have an agreement between the parties, I would bring it back to the council and have the final approval of it.
Good. Thank you. Let's move on. Petitions, remonstrances, and communications. At this time, is there anybody in the audience that'd like to speak to this city council about anything, and it's your turn to come on up? Do you have a card?
I do.
Go ahead, call her forward.
Anna Mae Smith.
Anna Mae Smith. Your name and address for the record, please, and the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Anna Mae Smith. I live at 1881 Barrington Circle in Rockledge, Florida. I'm here this evening. First of all, I want to thank the council members that did return my phone calls. I did appreciate that. And there's, there's a lot about Rockledge to say that's, that's always very good and positive. This year, 4th of July, I can't, it really, it drove home, I never thought I'd be here, to tell you the truth, talking about fireworks. And it became acutely apparent to me that this is very dangerous. And I think that what has happened here in the state of Florida is that many legislators, because of the hefty contributions that these entities, this industry, gives to political parties, have pretty much gotten to have sales of very heavy equipment with a wink and a nod. All, all a citizen needs to do is to go in and say they're going to be signing a piece of paper and using it for agricultural use. And it's never checked, it's never verified. And as a result, I think a lot of people are buying some heavy-duty stuff. What happened to my home this year was an eye-opener for me. I had about $500 worth of damage, and that, that isn't the end of it. My home, my roof was covered with gunpowder. My lanai was covered with gunpowder and debris. My pool was covered with, with gunpowder and my pool deck. It cost me $500 to have the roof washed and the gutters cleaned out because they were clogged from the cardboard of spent cell, shelves. The lanai was burned through by a mortar. And, so that, that has not, the screen has not been properly repaired. It's been patched, but not properly repaired. I'm asking the city to, the city council to consider an ordinance and to possibly do additional communication with citizens, because it's become, you know, it's, it's, people think, you know, you're just against fireworks, which I'm not. But I'm against the destruction of my home. And I can tell you, the worst thing for me on this event was the fact, not so much the roof can be replaced, the home could be replaced, the screen could be replaced. But what was taken from me this year was my peace of mind in my own home. And I wonder about the citizens of Rockledge that are struggling and living paycheck to paycheck. The, the people that are in homes that can barely afford to be there, and are struggling and have maybe illness, sickness, whatever, in their own lives, they don't need this added burden of somebody who probably unintentionally was just plain inconsiderate and didn't think through what their actions and what their own enjoyment and the havoc it could reap on somebody else. So, I'm asking the city council to look into an ordinance. I would like to see the little newsletter that comes from the city about town to remind people before the holidays, you don't do this. This stuff is illegal. The stuff that was used at my house was professional-grade, and it didn't belong in a residential area. It's against the state law. But you can go down there, and I did take a picture with my camera. You go by Sky King, and there's a sign out that says, "Buy mortars and cakes, discount. Buy one, get one 50% off, or buy one, get one free." They don't say it's for killing the birds or protecting the hatcheries. You know, this is a complete charade that's being perpetrated just to keep an industry lucrative. And I think that, that we need to have a safe city. We, we've always been a city that has put the community and its residents first. And I think this is a matter that come 4th of July, I shouldn't need, or nor anybody else need to be fearful of being in their own home. And it shouldn't be left to the citizen to pick up the phone and call the police after the fact, when it's, when it's really tough, and it puts a strain on them. The other thing I'd like to say is that Chief Lasada and Chief Martin at the Fire Department, I appreciate their attention. I'd like to say that I can, I cannot, I can say, I'm very happy to say that I appreciated the professionalism of Corporal Deakins and Officer Navagato, and the efforts of Sergeant Kennedy and Officer Holbrook. I think we have a lot to be proud of with these folks, but there's only so much they can do. They need your support. The citizens of Rockledge need your support. And I think that we need to drive this home, that this is not safe, it's not a good idea to do it, and maybe there ought to be a price to pay for doing it, rather than having the burden on the citizen, who maybe can't afford the cleanup bill. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I, I talked to Mrs. Smith, and I'm sure most of you up here got a phone call from her as well. But I think that she's right. It was out of control this year. I mean, it's more than I've ever experienced before with fireworks. I don't know really what the answer is, but I would like for the police chief and the city manager to come back to the council within the next 60 days or so, and come back with recommendation that they would, on how to, how to avoid this next year, and what we're going to do about it next year. But if 60 days is enough, chief, you think? Okay. Both y'all, if, is that okay with the council? And come back with a report to us on what we should do to try to stop this from happening again next year. It was, I had several calls, not only Mrs. Smith, but people were telling me how out of control it was, and I experienced it some myself. I, I saw something this year that I'd never seen. I saw, as she said, there were some pretty serious bombs going up in the sky this year that I'd, I mean, stuff I'd never seen in a private display before. Now, that was ordinance. That wasn't fireworks. They're like ordinance to me, no doubt. But I've never bought a firecracker in my life. I've never purchased one in my life. I'm just not a fireworks guy. It doesn't mean nothing to me. But people love that stuff out there. There's a lot of diehard people that love it. And, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add something, too. I just wanted to say that a lot of this stuff is unreportable in some of the statistics. A lot of people get cleanup to do and things like that. I mean, in years past, I've had to clean up some, some flares or something that ended up on my lanai and things like that, and hey, somebody was having a good time, no harm, no foul. But there's, I think, a lot of things in the fireworks industry that doesn't get reported. And I do think that sometimes, some of our legislators have given this very cavalier approach. It's no big deal, just turn the, turn, but they're not realizing that the, there's a proliferation of this stuff going on, and somebody is going to get hurt, and you, we can't, we can't fix that.
Thank you. And they will have the city manager, we'll keep you in the loop as well, Mrs. Smith. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak to the city council about anything that has to do with the city of Rockledge? Seeing none, let's move on. City manager reports. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor and council, just one quick item, as it's getting a little late. I would ask you to help me congratulate Alex Bernard. She was recently promoted to an acting planning and grants director from a coordinator position. She has taken on some more responsibilities within the city, and she's doing an outstanding job, so congratulations to Alex. That's it, Mayor.
That it?
That's it.
Well, that's a small city manager report. I'm looking for a motion to be in receipt of city attorneys.
Chairman, move to be in receipt of the city attorney litigation report dated July 13th to 2017.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes. The last, on the actually second page, it's going to be discharing, nailed out the stipulated final sentence. The stipulated final judgment for the forfeiture of the $3,251, we've settled that one. Hopefully, we get everything signed, get the court to approve it. That case will go away. The, on first page, the $77,690, preparing the witnesses, I'll be noticing this for trial. They're crazy enough to take it into court, that's fine.
Good.
As for the other one. Well, every time I turn around, there's one reason or the other why we don't press on with it. We've been in conversations with the protagonist in this case, and we decided exactly what our strategy is going to be, but city manager and I are going to have to discuss that, or how to go with this, whether we believe there's any fruit that will come from the. how to go with this, whether we believe there's any fruit that will come from the discussions. However, that one is still going on. As, anyone has any questions concerning the litigation report, I'd be more than happy to answer them. I do have one other thing for the council.
Yes.
I have taken over the responsibilities for the Community Redevelopment Agency. This council approved in April a contract for sale of a piece of property, .017 acres, at 88, or 889 Barton Boulevard, going to be sold to, hold on a second, CEB Invest Inc., which is the contract. The title company is being a bit recalcitrant for a $10,000 deal. They are requiring, because of some anomalies in the minutes, a resolution from the council. So I prepared one and so we can get this thing closed, the title work done. Resolution, City of Rockland, North County, Florida, confirming and authorizing the sale of .017 acres, a city-owned land to CEB Invest for $10,000. And then it goes and just putting, I gave you each a copy, legal description of the property, statutes of law, what we're doing to the program of the property, and essentially authorizing the sale, as you've already done.
I'm looking for a motion to waive the reading and adopt the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, waive the reading and authorize the resolution.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Anything else, Joe?
Just that, I request that the city clerk certify a copy of this resolution so that we can get it to the title company and get this thing down.
Okay. Now, in, since 1999, I've never seen our, our litigation, litigation report on one page before.
Wow.
This is amazing.
Maybe people just lose it.
I've seen it as many as four pages before.
Wow.
Nobody's suing us? I mean, this is amazing.
You know what? Don't say that.
I know. I'm not going with it.
Don't put that out there on the internet.
Okay.
But, no.
You three, Mr. City Attorney.
I have nothing else. Thank you very much.
Let's move around. City Clerk?
Yeah, I do have a couple of things. Thank you, mayor. I wanted to remind council that there will be a ribbon cutting for the tilted cop on Friday at 4:00 PM. I believe the ribbon cutting itself is at 4:30, and that is down at One Orange Avenue. So I wanted to remind you of that. The other thing is, I'm curious to know and, and would like to get your feedback on how things are going with changing over to the cityofrockledge.org email. I am still making it a practice to send items to both the cityofrockledge.org account and your personal accounts. However, I would like to, you know, stop sending to your personal accounts. Are you finding the webmail easy to utilize? Are you checking it? Because I'm noticing, when you respond, that sometimes it's still from your personal, most times it's still from your personal.
Looking meaningful.
You're just in my line of sight.
I have not had my meeting with Chris yet. It is scheduled, but I have not had my meeting with Chris yet.
Okay. And you are, you're excellent about copying me, but, you know, I'm hoping that we can get this implemented and I'll get down to one distribution list, but, you know, and if you need anything with regard to its use, Chris and I are always available, so.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, when you take this class.
Oh, you get a certificate.
You get a certificate.
Wow.
Chris D's.
I didn't get a certificate.
Academy of emails, you didn't pass.
That must mean I didn't pass either.
All right. Joe, you done?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Hartson.
Just, I also want to learn how to get rid of spam now, and so, I've got a pile of spam that's piling up, and I, some good stuff's in there, I just haven't figured, been all sorted out. The other thing is, is over the last, well, since the last meeting, I think I've been clicking about every weekend for something, Little League, or 4th of July, or, I'm about hot-dogged out, so, thank goodness the summer's halfway through and.
We're halfway. You're right.
So I've, the work is still ahead, but.
Yeah.
Moving along well. I went to the legislative meeting last week. There was some talk about cutting this down to just one item to bring forth, and the other item from each committee was to be home rule, period. So we really want to reinforce that from the League of Cities towards the legislature. The other items was trying to squeeze about 60 people's ideas down to one concept that could sell, and it turned into a mud fight, and we'll have to fight it out in August when we go to that meeting. We'll see what happens.
Good. Councilman Dasky.
Just a quick update on the 9/11 ceremony meeting. We, the group, or our committee, has had several meetings. We actually have our guest speaker list pretty much done at this point. Port Commissioner Wayne Justice will be there. We have a special treat for the 9/11 ceremony this year. We actually have two retired gentlemen. One was on Air Force One, and the other one was on the ground, but they were communication people, and they were in touch with and, and talking to the president during the 9/11 event, so, and they live right here in Brevard County, Rockledge, Viera area, so we're really excited to have them as well. We also have a guest speaker from the Patrick Air Force Base, and, is there one other one? Uh, myself, but that's, that's just a, that's just a short thing, so. The, the meetings come, or the programs coming along really well, and we're excited for it. Put it on your calendars, be there, 9/11, Monday evening at 6:30 at the memorial.
Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith.
I pass.
Dr. Ferguson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Wednesday, I'm not sure if all of us saw, the recognition and even the, the report Channel 9 News and the police department talking about the diversity, so I just wanted to say once again, Chief Joel Asad, I think that department's done a tremendous job. Also want to bring up and recognize Phil Finn earlier. We have some writings going out to him from our church. The last Saturday, we actually had a funeral at our service, at our church, and it was a young lady that passed away, 19 or 20 years old, and the EMS had to be called, firefighters and EMS, because the mother was overcome with grief, family, really a lot of number of family members, but I have never in my life seen so much compassion and, and care and concern from those EMTs, and Phil Finn was obviously a part of that group, about six or seven of them, that came and, believe it or not, they stayed throughout the duration because the mother did not want to leave until after. She had the opportunity to kind of show her respects, and they stayed right there monitoring her. So I just wanted to make sure I brought that up and recognize that here at our council. We have tremendous police department, obviously, and EMTs and fire department, they're doing a great job.
Good. And you look good on TV, too.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Forester. A couple of things. Good to be back, and I have not checked my email because where I've been, there wasn't any. But I will, hopefully tomorrow, before I hit the road again on Friday for a couple more days. But during my travels, they do have newspapers up there, and I, I read a couple of articles concerning some cities who have gotten into basically providing their own power for city facilities through the use of wind and solar. Now, people think we have wind here, but if you go out west where they have the big windmills, the power generating windmills, you know you can't keep your hat on out there. But I thought it would be perhaps something that we could look into, have the staff take a look and see if there are some areas where we can generate some power in a cost-effective manner, even if it's to just provide lighting, or maybe even run an air conditioner or something that we could save some money, and also to look into some other ways that we can start making some switchouts from, into some more energy-efficient lighting and water usage. Anything, if we can save a little money and save resources at the same time, seems like it's a win-win to me. So I'd just like to ask the staff to start taking a look at that. When are we gonna talk about the elevation? Is that, is this just for information for tonight?
Just for the audience, Councilman Forester, during Finance and Budget, had asked for a copy of the plans of elevation for the potential civic hub just to our east on this property, just to east of City Hall. So with each councilman, they have a copy of the elevations, and those who were not on Finance and Budget got a copy of the 90% plans for the civic hub. So yes, it was.
I'll talk to you in the next week or so.
I thought was to have either a workshop or whatever y'all want.
I can meet with you, Dr. Fetter, in the next week or so, and I do have some questions about that. I think that's all I have tonight.
Deputy Mayor O'Neil.
Oh, yeah. I checked my city email three times today, which is really a challenge on my little five iPhone, because the print is just so small, but I made it. Each of you today, I sent it to the city clerk this morning, a PowerPoint presentation that was done by Gary Resnick, the mayor of Walton Manners, who is also an attorney, who also has worked extensively on the usage of the right-of-way for communication devices, specifically the 5G network that's supposedly coming out. The PowerPoint is really impressive. If you get a chance to look at it, it will at least bring you up to speed on what's going on with that. I attended both the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization meeting since our last council meeting, as well as the Central Florida NPO meeting. The agendas are in the books in the lobby. At the TPO meeting, the local meeting, we learned Thursday that we are now a partner with the Central Florida Expressway Authority. It's got an acronym I couldn't touch it if I had to. That being said, the two groups meet at the same time, on the same day, once a month, and it was easier for the TPO to change the meeting time than it was at Central Florida Expressway Authority. So effective August, the TPO will now meet at 3:00 in the afternoon as a regular meeting time, and that's gonna remain in place until who knows when. Commissioner Jim Barfield, our county commissioner, is the Brevard County rep to the Central Florida Expressway Authority. Little handout, we had a guest speaker a couple, meeting, a meeting or two ago, Mr. Satloff with the climate change. I gotta tell you, when he finished speaking, I had no idea what he'd said. He lost me out the gate. But he did come to the Space Coast League of Cities Board of Directors meeting. I've gotta tell you, he did a much better job there. He was very articulate, he knew what he was talking about, and the, they called a roll call vote to approve the resolution that I've given you. It's significantly, again, it's significantly different than what we did. The vote passed 12 to 4. I will tell you, Rockledge voted no, because we voted no. We took no action at our council meeting. So if there's a question as to why I voted that way, because I have been asked, I would have probably voted for this, not for what he proffered to us. I did appear before the Brevard County Commission on July the 11th at the county commission meeting in support of the counties going forward with a $1.5 million grant, not pulling it from the consent agenda to play with it. They have until May of next year to complete it. If you don't, the money goes away, and there was some fear that it might be pulled from the consent agenda and toyed with, and that would have put us beyond the date where they could do anything with it whatsoever. The League of Cities Annual Conference is in August in Orlando. I'll not only be serving as the City of Rockledge's voting delegate, but I'll be representing the Space Coast League of Cities on both the resolutions and Legislative Policy Committee, picking those one items from each of the policy committees to go forward with. I'm guessing that the president's not going, Mayor Capote, for whatever reason, and the first vice president is already on the committee from another avenue, so I'll be there. Finally, for those who know him, Bill Ellis passed away on the 4th of July, a huge community volunteer. His funeral is Saturday. It's at the Max King Center in Melbourne. It starts at 10:00. That's the only facility in the county that would hold the crowd.
Yep.
If you're going, I strongly suggest you get there early, or you wear your walking shoes, because it's gonna be a, a, a big group. And if, other than that, you know, I gave you a lot of grief about your Reds up in Boston, and it seems like they just pulled way ahead of my Yankees, so I'll yield.
Okay. I will adjourn this meeting at 8:13.